One nation.
Under our name.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Gilligan.
I think on the content agenda, we need to pull the.
Okay.
I agree with everybody.
You'll make a motion to that.
With that being said, I'll make a motion. Then agenda. And pull the review.
Move and second it. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is election of officers. Yes. Mr. Gilligan.
The overkill.
Well, the question on that is if we do that, then she takes over on, on the vice chair decision. Do we want to do vice chair first, or do we want to do?
That's the chairman's problem.
I just say we clean up vice chair first. As though I would entertain a nomination for vice chair.
I'll move and nominate. Commit for manhood.
Move and second it.
Nothing.
Well, I don't want to say that Dossie can't be gone anymore.
Fine. Well, I see right here on this, you didn't look at your pretty close.
Yeah, I said for life.
My wife?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Um, so it's been moved and seconded to. Oh, elect Commissioner Mangle as vice chair. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now.
Good chairman, I will nominate the overkill.
I'll second that.
Affirm second. Further discussion, I see on the agenda this for life.
It's for life, that's not true.
Um, move and seconded, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you very much. Where's this? There we go.
I would like, I would like to thank you for your year of service as chairman of Park County.
Thank you.
It has not been easy.
No, I thought the year you went through was the tough one, but.
That was a bit.
Yeah, this one wasn't, wasn't all that fun, but it wasn't that bad, and had a good team behind us. I need to make it work and. But I'm glad if turn the reins over.
The other side of that is none of you are going anywhere, so I need some help. Okay. Move on to.
It's not a public sort of.
All right, thank you, manager. So what we have before you is a court request for an approval for. The Riverside Minor Subdivision sixty subdivision improvements agreement and final platform. The applicants are only Vicki Mallett. This property is located in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Coney Powell Rule. We didn't receive an application for this final platform review on November twelfth of last year. And we did receive a revised final plan on December twenty eighth of last year. So then let's request approval of this final plan, it will be a five lot subdivision. Each of the five lots are four acres, all for residential use. Should this be approved, there'll be a remaining parcel of four, about forty-five and a half acres. The applicants also request for approval of their subdivision improvements agreement, which you saw. And an ESCO agreement, which is required for utility improvements. My understanding, the only improvements really that are required will be electricity. And we did receive this draft subdivision group agreement, December twelfth of last year. The county attorney's office requested minor changes, those were done. The county attorney looked at this, granted approval on December twenty eighth. The draft ESCO agreement has been approved by the county attorney's office. The applicants request Pinnacle Bank, and I think that language is in that, that ESCO agreement. Those are some of the details for this subdivision, the location, it's approximately two miles southwest of Alston. That's shown in figure two. It's about half a mile south of Highway fourteen A. It's on the north side of County Lane fourteen, of course, this property is on the south side of the river. As I mentioned, this is, this property is in the GRP zoning district. These lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that district. In terms of the surrounding land uses, we showed, we showed you a map in figure three. A lot of the land around this proposed subdivision is residential, residential vacant. There are some subdivisions in the area, primarily to the southeast and east. There is some public lands to the west. In terms of site characteristics, this property is currently vacant, has native vegetation. And the topography is generally flat, and man chair, figure four, we showed you a total map. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required. This is not a public hearing, so we did not obviously do a public hearing notice. We've not received any public comments. The board of county commissioners reviewed and approved the sketch plans for the subdivision on October nineteenth of last year. There were some conditions that all of you had. All those conditions have been met, I'll just briefly mention what those were. One was long-term noxious weed management plan, we have received that. One was a domestic water quality test result, we received that. And we, I think we shared that water quality test with you, it was safe, there was no chloroform or E. coli. Low nitrogen, low, pretty much everything. Another condition was response regarding length and power. We have received that, we showed that with you. Another condition was a draft subdivision improvements agreement. That's done, we showed that with you, and the ESCO agreement, you have a copy of that. Also, comments back from the Willwood irrigation plan. We did receive their response, they said there are no water rights attached to this property. Another condition was the oiling right to farm and ranch act, that is on the final fact, so that condition's been met. Another condition was a note on the final flat talking about non-conventional systems due to the possibility of slow perforation. The plant review committee reviewed this final plan on November thirtieth of last year. There were some corrections, modifications, those have been made. As I mentioned, we did get a revised final plan on December twenty eighth of last year. Man chair, we have some findings that, that we, that we found. That might consider also finding, we have a staff recommendation approval. We have some recommended conditions, man chair. In regard to the subdivision improvement agreement and the final plan. Our recommendation is to have two separate motions, but we're thinking one resolution. And then we're hoping a motion, should you choose to approve, a motion and resolution for the ESCO group. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, um, Kim, so. I guess, are we putting the cart before the horse on the ESCO agreement subdivision, improvement subdivision agreement? Prior to the ESCO agreement, ESCO agreement, or does that subdivision group improvements agreement have, have conditions in there that it's ESCO?
You, you know, I know the, the subdivision improvements agreement talks about the ESCO agreement. And the ESCO agreement talks about the subdivision improvements agreement. I don't, I don't, I don't believe it's a problem to do the SIA first.
Well, next with that, then I'll make a motion that we approve the. Final, or the sketch plan, on the final class. You were saying final class.
I'll second that.
Motion second approved, any further discussion from the board? Oh, is it favor?
Aye.
Motion on the SIA?
So move, ma'am chairman.
On the second. Further discussion? Oh, is it favor?
Aye.
Thank you, manager.
Next part of that will be the Riverside M sixty ESCO agreement. Are there any questions on that?
Chair, just a question on how we came about with the amount. Was it at current prices? Could it be finally developed? Bank who came up with the amount, how did that work?
So, as you know, that amount is supposed to be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five percent of the estimated cost. You know, Commissioner Mangle, I don't know if it's a future estimate or if it's an estimate right now. But I know I did see it's an estimate that came from Garland regarding their labor and materials. As far as timeline, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Ma'am chair, I move that we approve the ESCO agreement Riverside. And also the resolution. Be put into the resolution as well. Thank you.
The second to approve the ESCO agreement resolution? No, is it favor?
Aye.
Thank you, manager. Thank you, commissioners. Two, two resolutions. So the two.
Not in your way. Is that a big?
No, that's what I asked.
So now, thank you, the board. Yeah.
Oh, okay, did you bring in? Nick, bring in a vital?
I don't know.
Reaching, means impossible. Reset.
We're gonna have to sing a voice to debate. For that purpose, hopefully, it's a one-time thing, not a over several months. Well, they used to building past all the time, and it was, I think it was water. Every day on the house.
Scott. Before you, before you leave the building, would you, or do you have a white piece of paper? Would you sign a white piece of paper for me three times? Because now that you're vice chair, we're gonna have to get you in the tire system.
Right. The government's gonna keep track.
Right, I am gonna keep track.
I give my ten more. Just any white piece of paper?
Yep, just a white.
It's got very attractive.
Yeah. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
You know what? Forget about that, because I think I'm allowed to have it in a certain size.
Certain size?
I'll get, I'll get, I'll catch you. It's gotta be inside a certain size square.
Oh.
I forgot about that.
We're in a little bit of a hurry, so we'll go ahead. Chair.
Chair.
Review some bids and consider staff recommendations for the purchase of Tracco excavator or excavators for the public works department.
Thank you. So. As you recall, before the holidays, we opened up bids for Tracco excavators. We were looking at different sized excavators, considering one. One excavator for the landfill division, the public works, and then another for the road bridge division. Since that time, we went back, reviewed bids. As you recall, the bid for. Tri-State from Volvo was the low bid. And, and they offered the best buyback for, best trade-in for our existing machine and the best buyback. Whether we go do a two, three, or five-year buyback. So from a financial dollar perspective, I would quite point you to go. I think everybody had a little bit of. Lack of information or knowledge on the Volvo equipment compared to John Deere's, the cash. So we Tri-State modus, an excavator that we've been had out at the landfill for a couple of weeks. And our operators at the landfill and the road bridge operators all went out and operated it. And, oh, Chip, do you wanna kind of give a?
Yeah. We had some. We had local bridge guys from both our Cody crew run that, and everybody seemed to be good with it. And we also had some from the landfill crew, and some of them are very experienced. That all liked that excavator, so. And then we also had John Turkey look at it as far as the mechanics of it, and we can't find anything wrong with it, so. I'm good with it.
I'd really like to commend Brian on the, on the research that he did on that and gathering the intel from. Even private sector on what their thoughts were on those machines. And I guess the question I had on that. I know that Commissioner Teal was talking about when he was on it, I think maybe one of your crew was saying there was just a little bit of hesitation. I know there's some safety built in of how fast you can operate those. Does Volvo, are they, are you allowed to, can you adjust that? Because I know like on some machines I've run, oh, you have too, Chip, there's, there's a sensitivity adjustment that you can, you can go in and fix your own. If you wanted to, if you wanna slow it down, or if you wanna speed it up, you can, you can fix it. Is that something that can occur on that?
Honestly, I didn't see that.
Okay.
He told me that too, I didn't see that. So, and like there's some guys at the, at the landfill that are a lot more experienced than excavators than me. They didn't have any problem at all with it, so I.
But I also, also.
I didn't notice it.
I also know that's really critical when you're in, in high production as far as cycle times.
Yeah.
But it's not, that's not the job, that's not what we're doing here.
Yeah, we're cleaning cattle, we're putting in coal, which that's kind of why I wanted that size. But a bigger one would have been too much for us, but honestly, I didn't see any problems with it. He's really the only one to mention that.
Okay.
So, and he didn't, he acts like me, I mean, he wasn't real negative on the machine.
No, he just thought that, he thought there was just a little hesitation, or a little, just a little slow on, on your cycle, but.
We'll find out whether he can adjust that.
Yeah, we're not even. Again, we're not, you know, it's not like we're trying to load out, you know, ten trucks an hour, so.
Yeah, we really don't move trucks at all with your cars, very seldom, so. And I was good with it.
The other thing, I guess, like Commissioner said, we did reach out to Yellowstone County, Montana, that's run it for a while. I've run all three, Cap, Goddare, Big Horn County, Montana. Dr. Harris Trucking, Roger Coons, he's run it for many, many years. And everything's been positive, the service from Tri-State parts of service. We hadn't had any trouble with them, we had a vigilable of one of our Volvo trucks. And we were a little bit outside the warranty, and they covered it. So we've been, I think, pretty happy with them. So I think at this time, based on related info from the crews. We would recommend, what we like to do, we, we're looking at buying one for each division. After going through it a little bit more, we'd like to wait on the landfill one and purchase a excavator at the start. But we'd like to buy the smaller machine, which is the one sixty. Let's see, Tri-State state bid was a hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we'd like to go ahead and get your permission to purchase that one for Tri-State or Road Bridge. And then we want to regroup on the landfill and come back. We're looking at, we're supposed to get our call pack to the end of January, the first of February. And that's gonna decide a lot of how our operations work out there. And so we may come back to you with another plan after that, so we wanted to find one.
This, this purchase includes the, them purchasing the. The forty thousand, our John Deere forty thousand?
Yes, 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 it does.
And that had, that was the best, that was the best trade-in value we had of all the bids, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, yeah, in fact. They had, yeah, I think the next best, Halden offered thirty-two, five, forty thousand was the best trade-in. We picked up probably a pretty good price tonight, is, we, we probably haven't said that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Brian?
Go ahead, we.
I'd move that we purchase, we accept staff recommendations on purchase of the Volvo excavator for Road Bridge.
Thank you.
The second. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're, we're real quick, call it, ma'am chair, your person. We, they did say that the schedule delivery date was August first. They're, I think they did approval on that, it might be something where we need to carry funds. We might travel a couple of budgets, so just something to keep it moving there. We'll look that out. And the other thing, real quick, I know this one won't be given, but we are still looking at how to teach this bill. I'm trying to find out a suitable use word. So we'll come back in with that. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Yeah, that should have been chair years ago.
We're actually on break, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is for everybody. I don't have a chairman. Do you have anything for the, just the chairman to sign? Okay. You can start that one with Joe. All right, she might have some for me. Next thing on the agenda was to go through the liaison reports, which we do quarterly, for the organizations and the activities. I think the easiest thing, because it's been updated last year, is to just go down through the list that we have, so I'm gonna start at the top. And go through both the liaison report and verify the needed information that goes on the back of the page. So we'll start with the Yellowstone Regional Airport Board.
Can I give a report?
Yes, please.
Well, actually, I couldn't give a better report than what we gave a couple weeks ago. So handed question, I'll answer. We do have our first C1R meeting of the year, but I guess we got no location of that next person. Other than that, you know, I'm real, I'm very sorry that Delta's not gonna serve someone at risk, which they've done for years and years. I just would brief over. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Do they still meet on the second Wednesday at eight in the morning?
What's that?
They still meet on the second Wednesday at eight in the morning? Okay. I'll pull Joe down, that'll be interesting.
No report there. It's still there. Yet to make a meeting there, because it meets on the third Tuesday. They'll call me if anything comes parting, I have it to this point called.
Park County Fair Advisory Board is Scott and I, and I want Scott to not report.
Certainly an eventful year for the board. Now, they are working on getting entertainment lined up for this summer. They are, as far as the board makeup is concerned, they really know their livestock and their judges and such. But when it comes to entertainment and such, there are a lot of questions and not a lot of answers. So my expectation, helping them out with at least going through the process of getting some of these apps. So my expectation helping them out with at least going through the process of getting some of these apps. I end up, we talked about adding another category coming up, uh, this summer for young kids, a bottle. Bottle cap. And so that will be under discussion, but again, they, they will, they will go about two hours for each meeting. Talk about livestock. When I go to the fair, sometimes I'll just swing by, but now they're dealing with the entertainment portion of it.
And the other time it's been, say, Tuesday, six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Park County Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. We're gonna have a report on that today.
Okay. Hello, and meeting times are very. All right, Library Board, hopefully not a little bit. We're still, uh, moving forward. Karen's been a great asset, doing a lot of outreach. The Library Foundation is contemplating a bookmobile type of van to get a little bit more outreach on several things. Then I'm gonna pass you all a picture of, uh, a project that they did at the library. The goal was to make one special needs child life for a better year. And this child wanted to, a place where her children like her, could, um, who take a lot of medications and can't do a lot of other things, could have a place to come and have fun and learn to read and rest. So they put in a new outdoor bench for her up at the library on the walk around. So, cause that was pretty cool. Uh, we're still working with D S G. We kind of got too much back row. They've had a few issues with staff and COVID and things on the contract for the library. I'd say design, but just some thoughts on the design. So we're still in the process of that one. Other than that, pictures are going fairly well. And it is, um, four, Thursday, uh, four thirty, it's actually three thirty. Right? Okay. Four thirty? Yep. Okay, um, Museum Board, I'm also doing, and I think, yes, second Tuesday at noon. They have been spending the last few months updating their personnel manual, uh, doing a great job, working through everything. Pretty much echoing the Park County Personnel Manual things where they can, where it makes sense, for them to do that with the small staff that they have. They're also very appreciative of the county support or the Homestead Museum and the things that we spent money on there as far as making it. And that type of thing, we really appreciate that. Things are going well there. Um, Parks and Recreation is.
Yes, the, uh, we didn't have our last meeting. There was some illness and other things popping up in December. We do already have some requests that have come in for help. We've also put out a form that, uh, you know, sent out to the people putting out requests. We didn't have one before, uh, just, uh, to, so we don't have any questions. And some people are still confusing us with Shoshone River. So we're, we're trying to sort of push our way away from that and, uh, and, uh, but really this is a, it's a well-run board, and they're serious about their meetings there. So I'm happy to be on, on that board.
Second Wednesday, six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not in Hollywood and in college.
Up at the Rex Center. Okay. Um, Public Health Officer, Joe, anything?
I don't know.
You're still going to coordinate all of these? Okay. And that was just various, okay. Um, Travel Council.
Nothing much to update other than they're, you know, working with their new director and things, things seem to be going along well.
The Tuesday, ten o'clock, again, that's a tough one.
Tough one.
We have would be Lloyd. I don't know if Fisher, Bill is listening if he wants to give an input. I see he's on, but muted at this point, so I don't know.
I guess, no.
Okay. Um, then the Matiti Local Area Planning Advisory Committee is also Commissioner Teal. And the Park County Predator Management Advisory Board is Commissioner Teal. So with those, um, we'll wait for a report from him, but I'm sure he still does all three. Uh, Cody Alston, C Y R, I think Joey already gave us an update on that. And there is no particular meeting file on that one. It's when necessary. Okay. Um, those are the county-appointed boards that we have liaisons on. The next thing we have is county committee appointments. Basin Authority, Joe, still with that?
You know, yeah, I mean, if someone else wants it, I'd be glad to give it up. What is the joint power for? Basically, it's a joint power board and it's of all the counties in the Big Horn Basin. There's one county commissioner, county attorney, clerk of justice for. And basically, we pretty much run basin authority, child support downstairs. And we, we meet four, four times a year and move around the county. It's just a, it's very difficult to get other meetings sometimes, but I do my best.
Uh, Cody, should we talk first?
Uh, that's actually Lloyd.
That's Lloyd.
Lloyd. I'm, I'm sure there's a lot to report.
We might leave that one alone.
Right now. You gave me about just in time.
Court supervised treatment.
Yeah, not so much.
Okay. And that is a just meet as necessary or attend as.
They have an annual board meeting. I can't believe they have a board meeting. But yes, it's a, meetings are lots.
Okay.
So, we're scheduled.
Over Cody. I've been doing that and I'm doing fine. It takes the fourth, or Tuesday of the month, I believe, still, yeah. And, um, it's fine, still looking at economic development type things. Created a membership, uh, new election this month, bringing people on board. It is going fine. Um, Health and Wellness Committee, I'm doing that one. Colleen, basically takes care of that committee, the department heads and select officials. It's going fine. He's once a month, kind of at the way my link, Matt's available to help us or give us any input. But normally about the third Thursday, somewhere in there that he can take it further before Thursday, depending on what works for him. Um, Matiti Visitor Center is Lloyd. Who, wait on that one. Pal Economic Partnership, tough.
Well, Scott, Scott ended up taking that over.
Okay.
Um, nothing to report on.
You didn't know you could build.
And you'll find out.
I talked to Rebecca quite a bit.
She keeps us pretty informed without, be very informed for that.
Okay.
She mostly is looking for free radio time, but.
Um, Urban Systems, Cody, I've got that. We haven't had a meeting this year. Nothing that they're working on right now. I think things might change if they get an answer on the study for Big Horn Avenue. Some time over the next six, seven, eight months. Um, Urban Systems Pal is Commissioner Teal. W C C A Board of Directors, Commissioner Livingston.
Nothing really to report other than just the fact that having that, that association is quite beneficial, I believe, to the.
They are gonna continue to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Dawson's got a lot to do.
Well, that's great. Um, then the federal cooperative agencies that we work with, U S Forest Service, Shoshone National Forest, Commissioner Livingston and Commissioner Philbin.
I'm fine with it.
The biggest update now is that we're getting a new supervisor and they are still trying to work through travel management. Those are the two biggest topics right now.
Do you know what the timeframe will be on the supervisor?
Uh, she has last day in office, last day here is April 28th, when I last talked with her. And they have not, they haven't named an acting yet as of yesterday, so.
And then Yellowstone National Park.
So what I suggest on that, I'm chair is to scratch off the winter use. That was, that was established back when, when Commissioner French was battling with them to keep snow machines going and park open. But I think just calling it, you know, the Yellowstone National Park, and I'm fine with doing that. There's no major, uh, field report. You saw the committee, uh, Director Shawley, Superintendent Shawley was here. A month or a couple months ago and get previous. So, um, I don't mistake that one.
Uh, B L N. Commissioner Philbin and Commissioner Teal.
Nothing to report, not a problem. Continuing on that whole.
And those are just as needed conversations. Um, but, uh, but.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sure, you know, good things about her. And it probably behooves you to reach out to B L N. You know, we used to have like quarterly meetings with them.
Okay.
And we have not had one in over a year now.
Okay.
Just kind of get together and.
Dave, they know what we have.
Yeah, Dave was restructured at Casper for temporary.
Yeah.
Um, he's supposed to be back this month, so I'll find out where he's, first of all. Okay. Or he can remind me. And then pretty for the National Resource Plan, um, I was working on it. Open some, we left, uh, that's all in place for the board on the board. So I don't know if there's a reason to keep that on there or. Guys have been here longer and all that stuff raises a ten once in a while.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. We'll just take it on.
Well, the only thing is with the Nerf, is I don't know if we're gonna be getting any funding, go back into that account with stuff. But if it, if it happens, we can.
If it happened, we can all.
I think we'll take that one.
I don't think we're funding that one a lot. Account.
Anything else that anybody could think of? The only other thing I would mention is that, um, Mr. Livingston asked Commissioner Teal to attend a state Parks and Recreation. Here, and, um, Commissioner Teal asked me to go because there was no representation on horse trails and that type of thing. So I didn't attend at all, so I think it's a really good group. It's a large group. There's probably twenty-five or thirty of those meetings. A lot of input on a lot of recreational things in this area. And there will be some funding eventually come through the Parks and Recreation. Uh, from the governor, so we are looking at some projects, but I just moved very good committee so far, getting important. Should have a meeting February, I think, or by the end of November. Other than that, anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you for the help, too.
Go down there. You're not great. Line left on the cushion. Cause I knew we should be stopped, but.
I'm sure.
Next, but if you want to. What was the name of that group you just finished talking about?
National Resource Plan.
Oh.
Really, yeah.
Wyoming Outgo, right? That's a reason.
Hey, Molly, speaking of that, you asked me not too long ago about Todd. Did you ever get a hold of him? Larry Todd. What is your preservation board?
No, it was, that was Green Maple.
Pardon? Any other use? Oh. Parks and Rec.
I, I.
Our county.
Really understand and I thought, uh,
Parks and Rec.
Chairman of that board, the chapter.
One, me too.
And he, he never replied.
Okay. So we could. Because we've had people ask us on trails and stuff too.
I don't know who they are, but you might have a customer back at these upstairs, maybe. You know, I'm seeing a couple different people. I think about ninety-five percent of anything I've heard of around here.
Well, which is a happy new year.
What move was that?
A happy new year.
I did absolutely nothing. Um, and it was cold. They were probably on the roll class.
Only next week, like peanut.
Thinking that would take.
Started that, that we started like two o'clock and we have.
No, excuse me, I, I did look back, are you going to be about four o'clock when we have a drink?
He's Gallagher's in the.
That was it. I think I was a very good.
Yeah, I wasn't about to go out and drive.
I got it, you know, it was cold, it was really freezing. Since I'm like, oh, you're gonna be good tomorrow, I was like, Florida, I'm gonna be good around the yard, I guess. Being able to play it down there, you know, I thought, I thought about that. I don't think.
I, uh, I woke up about four o'clock and had a bunch of texts from outfitters on Buddy's way up and they're all, you know, I said, so I responded back happy new year to them. And I said, used to be you got a text from me this time of morning because I was still up. I said, now it's good, it's when I wake up.
That is true. Did you see, I want that gold storage area too, but we're not giving it to them. Oh. I remember some, my bike was parked outside.
I checked, oh, that's good. So I think, we need to double check on that. Those are records that need to go to archives. District Court has to.
That's right.
Yes, I guess it's.
Yeah, I miss. You got to see the landfill for. I did, I was, I was very impressed. I think there's a hell of a lot more we can do about the wind, but.
Well, you know, even Texas, I wanted to think it impressed me is because there wasn't any crack.
Well, I talked to, I talked to a friend line that would work out there. He's worked for Harris a bunch, you know, these front lines on Central Scottish Road. But, uh, he said there was a real simple thing that he went and did. They have the wind, but he said there was a foot gap on the bottom of the fence. He said.
Got to be going underneath.
Yeah, he didn't fill that. He, he thinks just, they go to the top of that fence and then do a tail or a bracket back. They'll catch a lot of them too.
Yeah, there wasn't even very much that, that fence. Yeah. And the other thing they were doing is they, they got a lot of dirt stockpiled. So it's going to, you know, they dump and then they put it in a pile and then it's covered over trying to get it to our daily basis, which we did. And so hopefully we just come back from it. And I will really take care of it probably. So I was, I was, as plain as I've ever seen. But he seems to be happy with the work that they have. I think a large part of on that road with all the bags, for people hauling.
Having made a city.
City truck. Yeah.
It's open up. Hopefully the council will do a little bit more.
You know, if the city would, if the city would impose a back, back, a back, yeah, back man or back tax. Or be contacted by somebody, people down, down. Of course not. One, I just thought, I found one laughing. Yes. So, right.
Does probably make me place a calendar.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody get a.
Maybe just one of them on that obviously. Yeah.
I mean, you had talked about.
And I have one.
To call me here. Yeah, that's got, and those were on the, on the agenda that has become. Chairman.
Why, I haven't seen either.
It's just been voted on.
What does it say?
On the agenda.
It's on, it's on our agenda.
Oh, cause I don't like that.
You can blame Molly for that, but. But it does say chair, man.
See, so it doesn't count. It doesn't count.
Yeah, appointment for life is what I. One in dossier over there was chairman to my. I wanted to put like, I should have put on a consent agenda, but then when it happened.
There he is. Yeah.
Did he make it?
He made it. There he is.
That's what I'm afraid.
Well, we got a new chairperson here. We're running way ahead of schedule.
All right. Somebody finally should get that.
Yeah. Oh, at this point, um, we have to quote Russell, the executive director of Heart Mountain Foundation. 2021 Heart County Disturbance Preservation Report and Accomplishments.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, very excited to report some of our accomplishments this year coming from the preservation mission. Uh, the, the projects that we worked on this year. Were the, uh, continuing our research into the cabins at Needle Creek. We also worked on the Sage Creek, uh, community building. Helping them see a register listing and then, uh, help the homesteader with the grant as well. And then we also, uh, we're involved with, uh, Heart Mountain. Um, we did some work with them. Getting some panels for the original bear camp there. That was part of a CLG dream and then, uh, also co-hosted a workshop with Matiti Museums as well. But, uh, all went on pretty, uh, pretty productive year.
Where is the, where is the, uh, research on the, on the Needle Creek cabin? Where's that happen? What's happened there?
Yeah, so that's actually a, uh, pretty close to, uh, where we want to be with that when we finish all the research and everything. So the next step on that will actually be able to take it over to the, uh, register nomination. What we're doing is we're going back to the State of Storage Preservation Office in, uh, coming up. Those grants are due in February. And we'll be seeking to hire someone for national register nominations that'll do the actual, that's out of all the paperwork and everything that's involved in that. And then they'll put one in for Needle Creek and then we'll be able to put it in at consideration. And we're also gonna have them do the Sage Creek community all at the same time. We've talked about the homesteader. We've got to see where that set says. You guys know the ownership on that is still. A, a little wonky, but you know, if, uh, if all parties want to pursue it, we can add that to it as well. We just haven't reached that point yet to figuring out. But, uh, all of the research is done. We've got a, a nice, uh, history of Needle Creek, uh, the bike cabins there, farm, all the high operations. I think it stands a very good chance.
I'm really pleased for the service.
Yeah.
I'm glad you guys are taking it.
Yeah, and you know, I think it was really good, um, that we ran out and did that. And I think, you know, uh, as I've said before to you guys, once we did that. A usual survey in the summer and broadly along with us, uh, then, then, you know, that article paper did a lot of good. And I know the Forest Service has some calls about that, so.
It's a good question. If it is included.
Mm-hmm.
That's our plan. Would that lead to any potential possibility of upgrading or those facilities at all, restoring them?
Yeah, I mean, where it sits right now is that the Forest Service basically has it designated in such a way where they're not really. You know, and if it collapses, it collapses. Um, once it goes through that process, you know, by Department of Interior Policy, um, they at the very least have to do bare minimums to keep them safe right there. You know, they have to protect.
I remember years ago with the Anarchist Governor, I remember, I got one, I totally repurposed that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's a possibility as well. You know, the, the register listing doesn't say, oh, you have to go through and restore it and everything, you know. But it does say, you know, you've got to keep them standing. You've got to keep them preserved. You can't just let them get beat up out there. And, uh, so I think they pass that, if you got that listing, then we could come forward, see any more grants from other places to, to go forward with the restoration. I know there's been a lot of community interest in helping out with the restoration.
That'd be great. That'd be great. I know the real estate or Kevin.
It better get, it better happen sooner than later.
Yes.
There's some stuff needs.
Yeah, I remember when I heard it during the outfit, uh, and Mickey was still over there. Everyone might, oh, we'd have to be a couple.
Yeah. And we did find the guest ledger, by the way, as, um, it's down in Arizona now. Uh, but, uh, with, uh, so it would be, I think it was, it was his son, uh, Mickey's stepson, his daughter, actually. Still have the guest ledger from it and everything. So, um, hopefully we're gonna get that scanned as well, so we can, we can show off some of the folks who've been through there. But, uh, yeah, I, I think it's a, a very promising ask. And I think, you know, within, uh, Forest Service and everything else. I know there are some people who, who would rather see him gone, but, um, you know, I think there are some people as well who, who are engaged with the story and would like to see them preserved. So I like her out to being able to do something with that. I think that we could, we've built a really good case around Sage Creek. Likewise, I think is a, a strong case because it's just not, there's not many of the whole community halls left. We were talking about it, I think the one up on Willwood is original and then there's the one out, what's it, him that I can't remember off the top of my head. The name, but Sage Creek is the oldest and has seen the least change. So I think it's gonna be a, a good one as well.
If, um, if in fact you all move forward or we decide to look at anything with the homesteader, let me know. If you'd like to attend the meetings on that discussion, see what we can get done.
And I'll talk with Brandy, um, and, and see, you know, what her feeling is. If you use, uh, the thing about it is that if registry nominations, there's so much paperwork and so many eyes, you've got to dot, you've got to cross. That it's easier to just hire someone and it does the professional lady do them. And so if we're having somebody work on it, it makes sense to me to knock out all the ones that we have ready to go. I just need to make sure with Brandy that, that, you know, we can get everything squared away. Because that was a big, when we saw that Paul Bruin grant from, uh, the sort of preservation office for them. That was the big hangup right there is, you know, not having a register listed. The lead that it would have made that a lot easier for us to get that log work out.
So, kind of chair of, well, regarding Sage Creek, they, they came before the Heart County Red Board. Asking for money. Asking for windows. How, how does that work as far as restoring, conservation, but you go to a world, get windows on that door? Does that fit into that category for preservation for, for your group to help them with that?
So, you know, as far as financially goes, uh, it does open some other doors that, that become available to them. Especially stuff like those Paul Bruin grants, things like that, that occasionally will come across through shit though, uh, you know, and of course that's federal money that's worth going down to the state. Um, so it does make them, uh, a little more able to, uh, to move on things like that. And as we talked with them about. You know, it does when they apply for other grants, uh, you know, uh, for like the recreation money that they, they went in for. You know, we would want to make sure that they were doing that consistently with the historic appearance of the structure and not doing something, you know, not putting final signing on it, basically.
So our big discussion too was, uh, how does that fit into regular age or amanses there? They had amanses there. They want to continue with that, but then, being a government of all, then all of a sudden you had to be a handicap grant that goes to restore a place like that.
Right, exactly. And I think that that's, um, you know, again, the register listing does help out a little bit in some of those respects. Because it does acknowledge the buildings are historic, you know, and you can, you make as many accommodations as you can, but you can't make accommodations that are going to interfere with the historic, the nature of the building. And so, uh, you know, that's something that we want, want to look into. And, and, you know, we were forthright with them and that, you know, there were some repairs. This might make it a little more expensive because they would, uh, they would need to do the proper, make sure it cut up. But everybody in that group is very committed to, you know, keeping the historic nature of that building intact. And so it wasn't something that they saw as a. Yeah, yeah, no, it's a, it's an amazing building, um, you know, so very cool stuff. And, uh, we, there was, um, uh, we also did an article on that one for us as well, uh, which I think got a lot of positive attention for it too.
While I'm starting coming out of.
Right. But, uh, yeah, I think all of that was really, was, uh, really pretty positive. You know, and, uh, so hopefully we'll be able to go in, in February, seek out the CLG grant money to get two or three registry nominations written. Uh, for those places and forward on that. And then the continuing thing with the, with the, uh, grant from Heart Mountain that we did is that's gonna pay for six panels in the original bear camp that I talked about. That sort of described the history of the buildings of the camp, but the sort of public facing into that that we did, which was somewhat hindered by COVID. But we're gonna keep it out because that we've been, uh, we're doing sort of, uh, public effort to identify remaining buildings, surviving buildings from the camp. And sort of assess what condition they're in and at least, you know, get photographs and everything so we can document those before they fall down. I think one thing, probably not this year, but next year, we're hoping to go back once we've identified, you know, uh, a large mess of buildings that people are interested in, in preserving. And seek some money from the State of this Park Preservation Office to get some flash room in the sense that they are original high-tech buildings. And I think that all, I think some, some money donors at least will like that.
I know.
Yeah.
Like, live in a house on Heart Mountain was built out of.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, and I, I think we're putting it at, you know, we have very, very basic coming in, but based on all the ones, you know, that are still out there. I think we're putting it, it's still around sixty to seventy buildings out there that we still think are, are part of, have at least part of our, so.
Anything else for the board today?
Thanks for coming by.
All right. Well, thanks so much. I appreciate it. And then, uh, I sent the, uh, port de moliere and it just, uh, has a signature page on the front. She can get you guys. Appreciate your time, it's my.
Anything else for the board today?
Voice is out here to oppose.
I'll post it paper.
Aye, aye. Great job.
Good job. Give me a standing ovation.